All right, well, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, Rookel, please.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item up is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use the time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. We did have a blue sign-up sheet here, and it looks like we have a Mr. Leach that is interested in coming forward. Is that on the agenda or later on the agenda? Well, don't let me forget, because sometimes I do, but I'll try not to when we get to that. You raise your hand or something, get me on. Is there anyone else that isn't currently signed up that would like to come forward during public comment to discuss an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, I see nobody coming forward, so we will close out public items this time. Next item up is consent agenda. All items under this heading are considered to be routine by the city council, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's request, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Now, we do have three items tonight, so is there anyone on the council that would like to have any of those items removed? Okay, I see nobody wanting anything removed. I would entertain a motion then. Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that the council approve consent agenda numbers one through three.
Okay, we have a motion, or a second. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up is the mayor's report. And I'd sort of like to kind of let everybody know what's been going on. If I miss any council person, obviously, let me know at the end, and we'll get you included on there. But I and Councilmembers Silvers and Hands attended the, yeah, and Hands, attended the picnic PD luncheon. Thank you for all the chefs who cooked, chief, and for, they cooked for the entire city staff down at our farmer's market. We're truly more than just Team Marion, we're family, so appreciate that. For those of you that may not know, I was on vacation for 12 years, so my report's gonna be a little shorter tonight. Oh, and 12 years, excuse me. It seemed like 12 years, 12 days. It didn't fly by fast enough, I'll tell you that. But I can tell you that Disney World, though, is not the world's happiest place. You stand in line for 90 minutes and get a one-minute ride does not make you happy, so, but anyway. So, there were a lot of things that the people did do for us while we were gone, while I was gone. But Councilmembers Leahy, Silvers, Riders, and Hands attended the Family Fun Friday in Brown Park. I don't know if anyone else attended, but that's why I have my notes. Another note, Councilmember, this is a joke. Another note, Councilmember Hands went to Make Music Day. Let's get that note thing in. Okay, I gotta explain the jokes, I guess it won't work. Sorry, moving right along. Councilmember Hands attended the Flags for Freedom Planning Committee meeting. We're all set to go. Flags are set. Setup is coming this Saturday at 7:00 a.m., and the takedown will be the following Saturday on July 6th at 10:00 a.m. On the 4th of July, the market will be hosting an event starting at 1:00 p.m. There'll be a band, food truck, flags galore. Hope to see everybody there that day. If you're really interested in coming out to mark the field, that's gonna be taking place on, was it Thursday?
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday at 8:00 a.m., is what my notes say, down at the farmer's market. Councilmembers Yodrich and Hands met with Mr. Engel to prepare tonight's agenda. Thank you for doing that. Councilmember Yodrich and several staff represented Marion at the Northeast Chamber of Commerce golf tournament. Now, I understand it's like a '69, we were way under par. I understand they were, they were, the team was on par with last year, par with last year.
Under par with last year.
Under par with last year.
Yeah.
Obviously.
We golfed on the surface of the sun for the city this morning, so.
We appreciate that, and I'm sure it was a good time. Councilmembers Silvers and Chaveta attended the Public Art Committee meeting. The committee has completed their master public art plan, which gives us guidance for any of our future projects. I think it's being presented this evening, so. I attended a farewell event today for Dr. Hubbard, Michelle Hubbard, at the Shymishon Public School Superintendent, and our very own Joy Engel, Mr. Engel's wife, was one of the guest speakers at the event. She did a really good job, so kudos to Joy for the job she did and wishing her well in her retirement. Not Joy, she didn't get to retire, but keep her working for a while, but, but no. And I met the new, the new superintendent, so that was, that was good. Dr. Michael Schumacher, did I say it pronounced correctly? Okay, and Councilmember, or Council President Hands greeted staff and staff, greeted businesses at the business appreciation happy hour. Thanks go out to our economic development tourism manager Karen Crane for another great event. Lets our business know how important they are to the economic vitality of our city, and we just like to show them a little love every year. OPFD is going to be hosting a dedication, opening of the new fire station at 75th and Concert this Friday at 11:30 a.m. And all are invited to attend that. That's, that's it, actually, we just had one page tonight, so. Concludes my mayor's report. Council items, first up is acknowledged receipt of the 2023 Independent Auditor's Report. We've got Director Oliver coming to the podium.
Good evening. Tonight, we have Tara Loughlin with AGH, Alan Gibson-Hulick, to talk about the audit that we just had completed.
Good evening. As Donna mentioned, I'm with AGH. I'm a senior vice president in our government auditing services practice, and most of you have been through this before, but this is to present the results of the fiscal year 2023 financial statement audit that was just recently completed. Again, the scope of the work that we do for this city is to opine on the financial statements, which is stating the financial statements you received are materially accurate. You can rely on them as a reader and user of the financial statements. The audit process is a lot of work, so I want to thank Donna and all of her staff, and really, a lot of the departments throughout the city for their assistance throughout the process, because we do talk to rec, courts, you know, all those areas that do receive money. And so, we do appreciate everybody's cooperation. The audit's always very efficient. We get responses quickly to our questions throughout the audit process. So again, thanks to all the city staff for their help. Before I go into our required communications, which should be in a separate letter that you received, I'm just gonna highlight that we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements, which means that they do materially reflect the books and records of the city for fiscal year 2023. So now, I'm gonna go over the, the letter, our required communications. For those of you who have been through this before, some of those communications is kind of standard every year communication, so I'm gonna highlight on what's new specifically for fiscal year 2023's audit. So I'm gonna kind of start towards the end of the first page. It talks about the adoption or change in accounting policies. I always like to highlight this. There was no changes this year for the city, although there were some new accounting standards that were technically effective for the city. They weren't material to the city, didn't really apply to the city's operations. So, I always like to point that out if you're looking at last year's numbers to this year's numbers. Changes would be due to changes in operations, not because things are accounted for differently between the two years. So, no significant changes to those standards. We did spend some time evaluating one of the standards. You might remember, I mentioned last year there was a new lease standard that required leases to be accounted for differently. There is a similar standard this year related to software subscriptions that is very similar to if you're just leasing software instead of a piece of equipment. But again, there's no significant long-term subscriptions that the city has. You might have some next year, but for fiscal year 2023, there wasn't any, so no significant impact there. On page two, again, not all numbers within your financial report are hard, fast, known numbers. There are some estimations that generally accepted accounting principles do require the city to record. So we always like to highlight those ones that are significant. And again, this year, they're the same ones as last year, and they're all pretty much personnel-related estimates. So estimating compensated absences, you know, what you would owe employees for sick vacation accruals. And then the other two are related more to post-employment benefits. So, other post-employment benefit liabilities or OPEB is healthcare-related costs for retirees. And then, of course, your share of the caper's pension liability. In all of those cases, we are required to make sure that the way management is determining those estimates is reasonable and in line with standards, and that information used is accurate, calculations are done appropriately. And in all cases, we found that that was the case. At the bottom of page two, we are also required to discuss any audit adjustments that were performed during the audit process. There were only two this year, so overall, a very, very clean audit. And you can see the dollar amounts there aren't too large when you consider the overall activity of the city for the whole year. One was actually just a timing issue of recording an expense that really wasn't incurred until next year. And then the other one was just chewing up a increment financing receivable with some information we received from the county during the audit process. So, again, a very clean audit. We had no misstatements that we found that are not reflected within the financial statements. Those are considered uncorrected misstatements, so none of those. So again, we only had two overall adjustments for the whole audit. Onto page three, I always like to point out, kind of in the middle of this, is just observations about the audit process. I already kind of mentioned this, but again, we had no disagreements with management during the audit process. We received information timely and answers to our questions timely as well. At the bottom of page three, this was new last year, so I'm just kind of, kind of re-highlight it, because it is important. Bottom of page three on the top of page four just explains the independence rules we're required to follow, that we're independent of management, and, you know, the city makes us aware if they think anything's going on that would impair our independence. So there's no concerns there as it relates to us being independent and be able to issue an opinion on the financial statements. And then on page four and into page five, these are just similar communications that you've seen there in the past. Again, we just like to do reminders every year about things like cybersecurity. Just keep it at the top of your mind. That's not something that necessarily falls in a financial statement audit. But we just like to remind councils and any governing board that we work with that it is a risk out there, and make sure you feel comfortable with how the city's handling that risk. Again, just a standard communication there, just as a reminder as it relates to that. And with that, again, overall, a very clean audit, an efficient audit, and I will open it up to any questions anybody may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Loughlin? I see none in either directions. Well, thank you again for providing an audit, and I'm glad that we came out clean.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, if you will.
Yes, I think that would be awesome. I would entertain a motion, that we accept that.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council acknowledge the receipt of the city's 2023 financial audit report.
Okay, we have a motion, or a second. Go ahead, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like the next item up might be the ETC citizen survey results presentation. There we go, we have Caitlin.
Hi, everyone. Tonight, apologize for my voice, I'm losing it. But tonight, we're here to present the community survey results for 2024. As you all recall, we complete this survey on about a three-year rotating basis, just so we can compare and benchmark ourselves over the course of time. But I have Robert here with ETC. I won't go too much into what they do or how they do it, that's what he's here for. But a copy of the community survey is available online. It was linked in your packet. In addition to that, we won't be covering tonight, but there also was a business survey completed, available for your viewing on the same link. We did review it with the business community at last week's business appreciation happy hour, which was quite successful. So we're very excited about these results. You should be very proud of your community and very proud of your staff for the results that you're gonna see tonight. So with that, I'm here to welcome Robert.
Thank you, Caitlin. Just trying to make sure I figure out how to bring this forward. Let me see. There we go.
You can also.
I got it, oh, okay. Hi, Mr. Mayor, mayors of the council. Caitlin said, I'm Robert Haycock, I'm with the ETC Institute. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to first commend your staff, Chris and Caitlin, and others that participated in this process. A lot of work to come up with the questions and fine-tune those. And I credit all communities that will take the time to reach out and engage their citizenry and business owners to truly listen to them. That's kind of a dying art a lot, a lot of places, and a lot of people in this country feel disenfranchised, and not here. And you're gonna see very positive results, and I think it's in part because of that desire to engage and to listen. And we'll see some of that as we go through here. So this is just a little bit of an overview, a footprint of where ETC is. We like to say we're one of the largest and one of the best market research companies in the country. We're with a lot of counties and cities throughout the country, more than 3 million people we surveyed since 2006, more than 1,000 different cities, and now all 50 states. That needs to be updated. So quickly, I'm gonna go through the agenda here, purpose and methodology, bottom line up front, the major findings summary, and then open it for any questions you might have at the end. So this is a quick description. I'm not gonna hit all of these and read this to you. So, the survey description, though, we tried to keep it fairly brief. So a five-page survey, we figured people, most people fill that out in really 15 minutes. The method, we administered between March and May. We wanted a target of at least 400 residents. We actually exceeded that and had 439 responses, which gives you a 95% confidence level that you're gonna have a margin of error. You probably familiar with that, any surveys you see, there's, it's always a margin of error, and usually 50 is the standard, but because we actually got over 400, we were able to deliver this with a 4.7% margin of error. So bottom line up front, and I apologize, this is rather lengthy, and it's worth reading, but I'm not gonna read it all. I will hit some of the highlights here. Basically, you'll see as we go through, residents have very positive perceptions of the city in almost all categories that we measured and asked about. Really want to draw your attention to the middle section that says the city of Marion is setting the standard when compared to Kansas City Metro and the national averages. So one of the things that happens when you do a survey is you're able to not just see your numbers in a vacuum, but with a company like ETC, we can say, okay, that sounds really great, but how are you doing compared to others? And maybe you get a 50% satisfaction on a particular survey, and you think that's really bad. But if you compare to others and you see their average is 30%, then it changes that a little bit. And we're gonna go through here. What we really want to do is come away with a list of items to help you go forward, to make a difference and move the needle in this survey moving forward. So the satisfaction ratings from Marion were the same or higher than the Kansas City metro area in 38 of the 39 areas. The only area, I'm sure you were gonna ask, what's the area that we weren't above them? It was, it was feeling of safety in commercial and retail areas. And you're within the margin of error, it's 4% below the KC metro area, but that was the only area that we measured that you were below. And we'll see all of those individually as we move forward. And then finally, you rated significantly higher, that means 5% or more in every single category that we measure for national survey. That doesn't happen by accident, it happens by a lot of hard work by you as council, your staff, everybody involved, and citizens for being engaged really helps as well. We'll go through these high investment priorities. We'll have a whole list, and we'll show you how we arrived at these. But enforcing the cleanup of litter and debris, rated as the highest. Enforcing maintenance of residential property, enforcing mowing and trimming of residential property, and enforcing the maintenance of commercial property, all will be highlighted as high investment priorities. So major finding number one is gonna be the residents have a very high perception of the city. Again, a lot of data here, I encourage you to look through it in more detail at your own time. But if you look at all these, no fewer than 64% of residents were satisfied with any of these different perception items. The one thing I will do and pause as we move forward here is I see a lot of cities, clients that we work with, that will focus on the red. So if we looked at the bottom line, there is how is the city planning new development and redevelopment in the community? He's, oh, 10% are unhappy. Maybe you should really focus on those 10% and making them happy. I suggest and encourage my clients to look at the areas of gray. These are people who took the time to fill it out, took the time to say they had an opinion, only to say, I'm neutral. What causes a neutral response? A lot of times, it's just they need more information, they're not familiar with it. But they don't, they don't click "don't know," they say, we, I'm neutral. So you're gonna have a much better opportunity, actually, reaching out through different means to inform your citizenry of what's really happening with some of these other areas, exploring, you know, what you can do in that regard, then chasing. There's always gonna be a recalcitrant percentage or two of people, no matter what we put up here, that are gonna be negative. But overall, very, very positive perception. We look at quality of life, quality of city services and all of that. Satisfaction with public safety, public safety services is a huge area of concern for a lot of residents. And you can see here, you had almost very, very little dissatisfaction with police services. Again, you had some areas there, quality of animal control, visibility of police in neighborhoods, where you had large areas of neutral. And if you're looking at trying to increase the, the blue and the light blue categories there, those are the areas you might focus on. How safe do you feel in the following situations? So we measured in a neighborhood, in your neighborhood during the day, at night, in the city parks, all of those. You can see very, very little in terms of people who feel unsafe. Doesn't mean you're totally disregarding someone who has a valid opinion and has had a bad experience. It just, we're trying to understand overall what the perception is. So if somebody comes in and said, our parks are completely unsafe, you're gonna go, well, most of the residents don't feel the way that you do, I'm sorry. It gives you a little better information, perspective. Satisfaction with parks and recreation, again, you can go through here. With the exception of fees charged for recreational programs, no more than 7% of residents are dissatisfied with any of the parks' recreation items. And I would suggest that no matter what you charge, most people are gonna find something issue with what they're being charged, but. Satisfaction with code enforcement, again, the majority of residents are satisfied with code enforcement. You do have some areas, some pockets of areas. Remember, this is just a snapshot in time, okay? And, and so, this is how people are feeling at that particular time when they're taking the survey. Doesn't necessarily mean that you have to devote all your resources to try to move the needle on those particular items. Satisfaction with city maintenance, the highest areas of maintenance were snow removal, large item pickup program, which seems very popular, mowing and trimming of public areas, and maintenance of major city streets. Again, you look at those, it's this extremely high level of satisfaction among your residents overall. Satisfaction with communication, this is kind of a tricky one, too, because sometimes it takes a while for these to really sink in. You can have a brand-new website, put all that money and effort into it, and it can take a while for that to really resonate, because people don't see that every day, it's just something they interact with occasionally. And I would submit the same thing with street maintenance. A lot of times, we'll see street maintenance will be the high on the list of citizens wanting to address. And you can have a great street maintenance program, but if they don't know about it, they don't see it in their particular street that they drive on all the time, it's not gonna register. So keep that in mind as you look at these. Major finding number two, we're gonna look at short-term and long-term trends. It was mentioned before, we try to do a survey every three years. So we're looking at, first of all, what's happened since 2021, and you can see some really strong movement in certain categories. Doesn't necessarily mean that they're leading the way in these categories necessarily in satisfaction, because you can see with youth recreational programs later, it's still ranking relatively low, but much better than you were just a few years ago. So it's really showing the effort that your staff are making to try to draw attention to these and, and publicize things in the public. All of these areas, it's very unusual to find increases like this in just three years. You've clearly made these a focus point, and it's resonated with your residents. You also had some decreases, and these are relatively small, and again, within the margin of error. And yet, we highlight them, feeling of safety, commercial, retail areas, down 2% in the last three years, and you can read the others. Largest increases since 2018, so we're going back a little bit further. And you can see, again, youth recreational programs, adult recreational programs, you already saw those before, so maybe there are a few percentage more if you go back all the way to 2018. I like this one, the last one, city employees did what they said they would do in a timely manner. Because we always hear from the anecdotal people saying, oh, they don't listen to you, and whatever. Well, clearly, your staff are making a difference, and efforts you've made for customer satisfaction, and trying to coach and train your staff are making a difference, because you can see an 11% increase in the last six years. It's pretty significant. And you had some decreases as well. Again, most of these are within your margin of error. How the city's planning new development, redevelopment, visibility of police in neighborhoods. I will say that is almost always on the list, and I'm not sure, if you're listening to police chiefs my whole career, what they can really do to change that. It just seems like it's a no-win sometimes. Visibility, they want visibility, but if they see them all the time, they're like, why are they here in my neighborhood all the time? You know, so it's kind of a catch-22 a little bit for our law enforcement. But the important thing is, I think, to demonstrate that the, the department listens, that it will engage the citizens, and it will be there when they need them to be there in a timely manner. Now, we're gonna go find some of the major findings of how you compare to Kansas City Metro in the U.S. I apologize, it's gonna seem redundant, because you guys are way above everybody else, almost lapping the field in some cases. So, really a lot to be proud of here. So, first of all, we're gonna, we're gonna show you, your results are in the dark blue. The KC metro area survey that we do of the KC metro area, it's not just a collection of the cities that we happen to represent. We do, we do a national survey, we do regional surveys across the country. So this, we have a lot of clients, obviously, in the KC metro area, so, you know, we, we have that. But you can see, every one of these that we're gonna show, you're much higher than, than not only the Kansas City metro, but look at the U.S. averages. I mean, just across the country, how well you're doing, how well you're managed, how well you're communicating with folks. Again, here, I'm not gonna belabor the point, because I know you have a busy agenda tonight, but you can see these, again, well above a lot of these categories, especially when compared to the U.S. average. Feeling of safety, again, we get down here to, I thought it was this one, my, oh, it is this one. So you see the bottom one in commercial and retail areas in the city. It's the only area where you're actually lagging behind the KC metro area, and I say lag is 4%. So that could change, again, because of the margin of error, but it might be a talking point. If you're wanting perfection and you're wanting to address every concern you can, it might be worth, okay, what are we doing with respect to that particular issue of making people feel safe in commercial retail areas? What are other communities doing perhaps that we could, we could mirror and do in our community? We get into code enforcement, that's one of those areas you're gonna see that there is a, even though you're doing really well, there's still a high level of concern within the community. Satisfaction with city maintenance, and I apologize, a lot of different categories here that we're measuring, from maintenance of city sidewalks, traffic congestion management, et cetera. But again, the important thing, look at those blue lines and how, how well you're doing, and how your citizens really understand what you're doing and like the services that are, that are being provided. Something to be proud of, for sure. We look at leadership. Again, it, it does start at the top, and you look at how, how effective compared to the, the other areas of the country, how your citizens feel about you, how they feel about the city administration and the top staff here that are working to make positive things happen, so. Trust me, I do have clients in some of these areas that are low on the U.S., and it's not nearly as much fun to make the presentation as it is tonight. So, again, satisfaction with communication is another, another program area, and doing very well. Now, we're gonna try to take all of that, and even though, put it in a context, because even though you're doing really, really well compared to these others, there are things that rise to the level of being a priority. So this, again, is a little bit hard to read from where you're sitting, I think, and I apologize for that. I actually brought my reading glasses, I'm proud I haven't had to put them on yet. But you see visibility of police in neighborhoods ranked number one. So what's going on here? One of the things we do is we do a set important satisfaction rating. Why do we do that? We're measuring not just how happy people are, how satisfied they are, but what's important to them. And so you will see in some of these categories, not on this particular one, but you'll see sometimes the most important rank, but there are 11 items, I believe, on this chart. The importance might be 11th, so you're like, or the satisfaction might be 11, but it's not important. So it's kind of one of those situations where, let's say you ask me how satisfied I am with the dog park. Well, we only have one dog park. Last time I took my dog there, he got chased by the bigger dogs, and it was a bad experience. So I'm very dissatisfied with the dog park. But if you put it on a list and you say, well, what's important to you is the dog park? They might say, no, I don't care about the dog park, I want these other areas fixed before I want the dog park addressed. That's just what we do to help, help guide decisions and, and inform you a little bit differently than me might with other surveys that you have done. than me might with other surveys that you have done. So the high priorities are in the yellow, medium priorities are all in green. Again, there are desires of your citizens to move forward in these areas, but what we provided is a, is a, is a calculation, a rating that you can analyze there. When looking at parks and recreation, one of these was, I think, so you can see here the satisfaction ranks, and you can see occasionally where an item might be very important or unimportant, even though they're dissatisfied. So now we look at code enforcement. That mentioned before, these really resonate as the top priorities that we see coming out of this particular survey this year. The top one is enforcing cleanup of litter and debris. And you can see of the items, of the six items that we indicated that had satisfaction, it was the next to least satisfied, but the highest priority. And then behind that are enforcing the maintenance of residential property, mowing and trimming on residential property, enforcing maintenance of commercial property. And then still important, but not, not as high as the others is the enforcing mowing, trimming of commercial property and enforcing sign regulations. I won't spend much time on here because it's a lot of detail and a lot kind of similar. So to your citizenry, there's nothing really here in terms of city maintenance that jumped up to that high level of concern. Means they have a fairly, and if you look earlier, they have a high satisfaction overall with your public works maintenance services. I always like doing surveys about snow removal feelings in the middle of the summer because people tend to feel a little bit differently in January than they do. And you get some good marks here. Other findings, so we did look at not just how you compare to other areas and just what we talked about, but we looked at some specific questions about, about your community. And one of those we wanted to ask was, how do you get information about the city? And you can see here, people could choose more than one. So that's why some of these numbers might be a little bit wonky when you first look at it, but overall, 73% of your citizens said, we get our information about the city from Highlights Magazine and the city's website and mailers, less so through next door or local newspaper or television shows. We asked, what type of information are you seeking through our communication tools? What are you really interested in learning about? And the highest there was calendar dates and events information. People want to know what's going on. If there's a party, they want to be part of it. So that's kind of what's going on with that. Information about city departments, programs and services, and updating about trending city issues was third on the list. We asked residents how much they agree with certain statements. Merriam should move the direction of a future downtown that is considerably different than the present downtown. You had a lot of folks there, 70, 80, over 80% that either strongly agreed or agreed. Merriam should continue to support a public art program. Again, a high level of that, but you did have 23% or so that were neutral. Didn't really, didn't really think it was that important, but they're not unhappy. Merriam should continue to allow open burning of yard waste and leaves. Again, you had a significant number still in the, in the agree and strongly agree, although there you had over 20% of the residents that disagree. And we combined the levels of disagreement just to kind of highlight that. We, we know your goal is for satisfaction, and we don't want to downplay people that are unhappy, so we combine them in these charts. And then Merriam should try to be, to bring a grocery store to town, even if it requires giving the, sorry, the store a multimillion dollar public incentive package. So you had about 58% of the people said, yeah, that's a good idea. We really need that. Some other folks weren't really sure or against it, as you can see there. So in summary, again, residents have an extremely high positive perception of the city. That's continuing from last two surveys, setting the standard truly compared to the Kansas City region and nationally. The numbers you have are the envy of a lot of folks that we work with, and should really be proud of that. And then the highest investment priorities, I won't read them all, we talked about them, but I will open up for any questions you might have.
Okay, there's, oh, go ahead.
I have a question on enforcement.
Yes, sir.
Enforcement on codes and traffic, all those, the dissatisfaction is that they're not being enforced strict enough, or the dissatisfaction is that they're being enforced too aggressively?
Yeah, I get that question a lot, and there may be room in the next survey to tweak that a little bit, but our experience is usually it's the, it's the former, not the latter.
We just sort of assume that it's the former.
Yeah, what we, what we hear from citizens across the country is those type of questions, are they, they want them enforced. They don't feel like they're being forced enough. They view, they see debris on people's property and grass over 12 inches or whatever your standard is, and they don't like it. And the sad thing is, a lot of times neighborhoods die passively and quietly. They, you know, people would rather move away than turn in their neighbor a lot of times for things, or complain, or risk somebody getting mad at them and all of that. But, but no, our experience is that's really a reflection of we need to, we want more, not less. You're welcome.
Any other questions, Silver's, go ahead.
I apologize, I don't really have a question. I have a statement. I found this very interesting, and I feel like we should all be proud of it. The data points that stood out the most to me were the largest increase in satisfaction, and it looks to me like that's directly tied to our community center and the programs that Anna and her staff have put together, and I think she should be acknowledged for
Thank you, Mr. Silver's. Any other questions for Mr. Hickok?
I don't have a question either, but I do have a comment.
Go ahead.
It is a heck of a lot more fun to hear positive results. I've sat up here long enough. Sean, you remember? We did not have positive results, so we all should be proud and should thank all of the staff that have been working their tails off to make this happen.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Vena.
I just have another data question. How many surveys did we mail out and send out?
I don't have that number in front of me, but it's probably around 3,500 to 4,000. It's usually about a 10% return rate.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yes.
Good question. Any other questions for Mr. Hickok? I see none. Well, thank you for continuing. As long as you keep bringing us these positive results, we'll probably keep using you.
Maybe we want to do one next year, they'll still be positive. No, I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's been an honor to speak with you and to be with a community that really has embraced it. You can see the way you're complimenting your staff, the way you're acknowledging the public matters. That's why I think you see the success that you've enjoyed. And obviously, there's still other, people are never completely satisfied, but we look forward to hopefully working with you in another few years and seeing what things look like then. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for the job you've done. And thank all of our staff. I mean, gosh, this is exactly why we have such a great city. Kudos to the staff. All right. It looks like next is Consider a Bid to EMCOR Services. Looks like we have Director Komki at the podium.
Well, that's a hard act to follow, but hopefully I can do half as well. So we recently completed an investment grade audit, and it identified a number of energy conservation measures, including HVAC and building control system upgrades. As noted in the package, there are currently three different building control systems that we have at City Hall, police, and the community center. And we're looking to provide one building control system that can be a single face, interface that can be easily monitored by staff. So we hired five-by-five engineers to begin design, and they prepared a bid documents that were bid in March of 2024. That included the base bid, which was HVAC upgrades and building control system upgrades for City Hall, Public Works, and the Historic Plaza Visitors Bureau. And then the bid also included two alternates. Alternate one was updating the existing building control system at the police facility, and alternate two was updating the same at the community center. So we received the bids in April, and Helm was our low bidder. Staff is recommending rejecting that bid because they didn't provide all the requested information and didn't meet some of the specifications in the bid document. So what we're recommending is that we award the bid to the second low bidder, which is EMCOR Services Fagan, who submitted the lowest and most responsive bid in the amount of And that included the base bid in both alternates. So their bid for alternate one was upgrading the existing Trane software system at the police facility to the latest software update of Trane at police, so we'd use Trane. And then alternate two would replace existing Siemens building controls at the community center to Trane as well. And I wanted to, we talked about this last time, so it's not a complete upgrade of Siemens at the community center. I understand that when that Siemens system was installed, it was a no-frill system. And since then, you know, the facilities manager has indicated it's a little hard sometimes to figure out whenever he gets on what's the problem, what's the diagnosis? So if we, we want to use the existing wiring and system and just replace the controller and have the latest upgrade. So we're recommending all the building control systems be upgraded to Trane system, which also goes with our HVAC, because our HVAC equipment will be Trane, and it will talk to Trane well, as well. So we'll have one system communicating well. So during our inspection of the equipment, we identified several different project enhancements that were recommended to include in the bid. The first one would be while, while EMCOR was up there, they noticed that the discharge ducts on top of the roof, they had the older installation. Those are, I think, 20 years old or so. So they recommended, you know, to meet the latest standard, to provide new installation. That way we have, you know, we can increase our life cycle. The other item that we didn't have in our bid, but we recommend would be to install that work over a weekend, so we're not disrupting employees that we don't, if it's too hot or too cold, it's going to be pretty uncomfortable to perform those upgrades at that time. So we're recommending weekend work. And the estimated cost for these items, as well as including a contingency for retrofitting any kind of items that come up during construction, is about $60,000 that we're recommending to add to the bid that would be paid for out of project contingency, which is also within budget. There was one other project enhancement that we noted, that screening for the rooftop units. When you're retrofitting the units, the unit is more, the rooftop three is more efficient, but it's on this curb adapter that makes it a lot higher. And when we put in the new system to tie into the pipe, it's going to be a little bit higher. So we're recommending hiring an outside sheet metal contractor to go ahead and increase the screening so you can't see it from the street. And that's also a building code requirement. So that would, the cost for that would be paid for using project contingency, and it's within the city administrator's authority to approve that. So we'd like to go ahead and recommend that we, we do that as well. We did note that some of the equipment won't come in for about 20 weeks. It's mainly the rooftop units. And so once the, if the bid is awarded tonight, they would go ahead and get the shop drawings, order the equipment, and then as the equipment comes in, you know, we'd go ahead and get that work done, and then the rooftop units wouldn't be completed till December or January. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question.
Okay.
It seems like, I mean, 20 weeks out, I mean, it is what it is, but it seems like there would even be newer technology in 20 weeks that would even be coming out, but I, I know we got to start somewhere, but what, do we know what the increased efficiency will be? It'd be like 10% more efficient or 15 with the upgrades of these systems, or do you?
I don't have that number, but the next item is commissioning, which is going to be looking at, you know, operations and efficiencies. It's not just the operation, it's operations, it's efficiency as well, but it's not just energy savings. It's also, like I know in City Hall, sometimes it's, it's hard to control the temperature. So, and the equipment, and the equipment is older, and so, you know, just making this a better system that's more efficient for everything. But I don't have the exact number.
Yeah, and I would have tried to, I did get to you before and then ask that question, so that's fine.
And it could be that if I look back at the investment grade audit, they may have made an estimate in there that I could go back and look, and I will do that to see if they have a number in there that would be an estimate.
Just curious, okay. You find out, let us know. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Silver's. You have a question?
Was the reason you mentioned weekend work brought up because it will incur time and a half? Does it cost more to do it on the weekend?
Yes. And they had some, they had the work doing at night, but then after more discussion, it was like, well, that could take a little longer. We need a little bit more time in order to do that, so they recommended the weekend. It's about $8,000 for weekend work. Yes.
Great, Ms. Vena.
Good question. The control systems at community center, upgrading those won't impact any function, sorry, function of the systems or anything like that during like business hours, right?
No, it shouldn't, and it should be a pretty simple upgrade.
I thought so. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Director Komki? I see no other questions. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hands.
I move that the council approve a contract, contract with EMCOR Services Fagan for construction of HVAC and building control system upgrades, including project contingency not to exceed
Okay, we're, I think, go ahead, Ms. Shadur.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Hey, Madam Clerk, we're motion a second.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like Director Komki's up again for the next item.
So this item is obviously in tandem with the last item that you just approved. So what we're recommending is that once the equipment is installed, that we hire five-by-five engineers, which is the design engineer, to go ahead and commission, provide commissioning services in the amount of $50,000. So what that scope of work would be, they would review the construction documents and shop drawings, they would do equipment testing, verification of proper operation, any kind of facility training that we need for this type of equipment, and a seasonal trend review and verification, looking at, you know, what's going on here? Are there certain issues at certain times of years, and what can we do to make this equipment as operational and as efficient as we can? So we're highly recommending the commissioning be performed because this is pretty important equipment, but it isn't required. If you did approve this, it would be within the project budget.
Okay, any questions for Director Komki considering this item? Okay, I see no questions. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hands.
I move that the council approve a professional services agreement with five-by-five engineers for commissioning services during construction of HVAC and building control systems upgrades in the amount of $50,000.
Do you have a motion or a second? Go ahead, Ms. Vena.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Hey, Madam Clerk, we're motion a second.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, looks like the next item up is Consider an Ordinance Approving a Franchise Agreement. Let's look around, Mr. Hill, come into the podium.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Next item on the agenda is the renewal of our franchise gas agreement with Kansas Gas Service. The existing Kansas Gas franchise agreement expired, it's getting ready to expire this year. We renewed it last time in 2009. The city attorney has worked with several other cities and with Kansas City Gas to, over the last year, to try to find a little bit more uniform agreement, a little bit better, more boilerplate of franchise agreements with cities and Kansas Gas. And so what you have in the packet tonight represents the efforts of the city attorney. This renewal is 15 years, as the last one was, which is standard, grants access to Kansas Gas to operate within city at right-of-way, obviously has clauses in there for them to pay for work that needs to be done and any restoration. They have to go through the standard permitting process, and it also authorizes the charging of a 5% franchise fee, which is standard, and that is also from the 2009 agreement, a 5% franchise fee, which is standard, and that is also from the 2009 agreement, which will be put on individual bills, usually gets passed on, you will see it on the agreement. And then there's also new, from the 2009 agreement, is an adjustable value metric rate. So there's gas that flows through our community through pipelines, that the beginning point and the end point are outside of our community. And so previous agreement that was approved in 2009 actually created a rate structure for that. How do we actually charge for the usage of that gas? And so there's essentially a floating rate that you'll find, it's the last page of the agreement, about essentially a 12-month floating figure that will be calculated on the amount of gas that flows, the value metric rate is what they call it. Happy to answer any questions about that, this is a first reading, we certainly don't have to prove it tonight, it is up to you if you would like to waive the first reading, but it is not required. I'm happy to answer any questions, or the city attorney would be happy to answer any questions also, pretty standard agreement.
Any questions for Mr. Engel? So, Mr. Engel. Okay, I assume we're in no time crunch to, we hate to, unless there's a time requirement, we're just, let this go as first reading, let somebody has a, go ahead, Ms. Shveda.
I was going to propose that we waive the first reading.
Well, we can, if you'd like, I mean, it's just, I didn't, it didn't seem like there was a time line.
Well, if no one has any questions, I mean, for efficiency's sake, is it everyone good as is?
Okay, go ahead. I think we're good.
Okay.
We're with waiving it, we'll have to do that in two things. The first one would be to waive the first reading.
Yep.
We have a second for that? Good, Ms. Silvers?
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion, a second, to waive the first reading? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shveda.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you. Shveda, go ahead, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance approving a franchise agreement with Kansas Gas Service.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, Madam, go ahead.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shveda.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like next item up would be, consider approval of an ordinance establishing common consumption area. Might be handling that.
I will take care of this.
Okay, why don't you do it from your seat there?
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And the ordinance before you is to establish a common consumption area for our Merriam Grand Station development. The city was approached by the developer to establish this. State statute allows the city to do this by ordinance or resolution. We are choosing to do it by ordinance, and this is the first reading this evening. Once the ordinance is approved by the city, then the applicant, Merriam Grand Station, can make application to the state alcohol beverage control for a common consumption permit. It's an annual permit, it's $100, it's a very minimal fee, they would pay that. Then that permit holder, which would be Merriam Grand Station, would grant permission to other licensed drinking establishments to participate in the common consumption area. So with the common consumption area, they can take their adult beverage out to that area, so they can leave the bar or the restaurant, take it out to the common consumption area. They have to clearly mark that area with either signage or fencing or whatever, similar to what we do for Merriam Drive Live. We put, like, no alcohol beyond this point. And then no alcohol can leave that particular area. The participating drinking establishments have to logo their cup with either their trademark or their, you know, their company logo, so that it's clear that all of the beverages being consumed were only purchased at those participating entities. The permit holder is liable for any violations that occur, so the city doesn't have any responsibility as far as that goes, and they are expected to, you know, abide by our regulations in Chapter 5 of our municipal code. I do have a representative here from Drink Development, if you have specific questions about their setup. The ordinance does require the map, which was included. You can see that it's kind of a T-shaped area right there in the general area of their restaurants. And I can answer any questions if you have any. This is the first reading.
Wait a minute, go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
I had a little difficulty looking at the map and understanding whether it, this area started at a restaurant, because I thought the restaurants were out a little bit further. But then I was also curious if this includes, if they have food truck events or other events like that, like they decide to bring in, say, a barbecue grill company who also wants to sell alcohol, does it extend to that, or just the restaurants?
It's only the area that's marked on the ordinance, which they submit that with their application. Now, an individual drinking establishment can do an extension of premise, which is a temporary permit. In other words, their permit would go beyond the boundaries of their restaurant. So if they wanted to move out into, you know, more of that common area, they can apply to the state for a temporary permit.
Okay, that's what I thought. So then my question is, how is that regulated? Are barriers set up that go from the front door of the restaurant to the common area, or?
So let me help you a little bit.
Sure, thank you.
So the common area is the area that's going to be underneath the canopy, and then the area that's on the backside that's going to be the amphitheater play area. And so they will obviously have those areas, as Ms. Pennick described, marked off, very much with fencing and other types of denotations, demarcations of where that area is going to be at.
Right.
So, yeah, it's there, it's underneath the canopy, and then the area that sits behind those two, those two buildings.
Okay, I understand that. What, I guess what I'm trying to get to, I was not, I was trying not to bring in specific names, but like, when you go to String Hall, all those businesses that sell alcohol, their doors lead out to their common area that allow alcohol. What I'm trying to understand is the restaurants that would be maybe holding an event that sells alcohol that can be taken to that common area, there has, the people have to walk from the restaurant to the common area, they're not adjoined, correct? So how do they get from the restaurant?
You can go right out the restaurant.
You can, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's what I, I couldn't tell from the map.
Yep, walk out the door, you're right there. Unless you go out the north door. If you go out the north doors, you're not, but if you go out the other doors, you will be right there.
Thank you, I couldn't tell from the map that they were adjoined, so thank you.
Ms. Ryder, go ahead.
And this permit is for the entire year, or is it limited?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Is this for the entire year, or is it limited?
It's an annual permit.
Okay.
And so they would have to renew it every year.
Does council have to renew it every year?
No, once the common consumption area is set, it's done. That's why we're doing it by ordinance.
I assume we could revoke it if we wanted to, if they did for some, for some cause, not that they would do that, but we have the ability to do that.
Yes.
Just for clarification's sake.
Yes.
Any other questions for Ms. Pennick? This was a first.
Does anyone have any issue with waiving the first reading on this, either?
I support this, but in the.
I support this, but in the spirit of transparency, I don't think this is one that we should rush through.
Yeah.
It's not a, if it was a renewal, as the franchise fee was, but this is the first time for, in fact, it's a reasonably new state law that allows us to do it, isn't it?
Yes.
So I just think we should wait.
Okay.
We're in no hurry, okay. All right. So, I guess, any other questions for Ms. Pennick, before we move on to the next item? Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, let's see. Oh, this. Okay, oh, this is the one, okay, gotcha.
All right, good evening, council. I'm here to share with you our Public Art and Placemaking Master Plan. A link to the full plan was in your packet, as well as a quick summary. The full plan is quite long, so I'm just going to go over some highlights with you. It'll also be posted on the website later this week, if you want to read it in all the details. So how did we get here? It's one of your goals, to support a public art program through, throughout the city. So last year, we reformed the Public Art Committee and hired Julia Dixon to create this master plan. Part of her process was to survey the community, Merriam residents and the arts community beyond, who are engaged in public art here in Merriam. We got great response from that, 354 people. She also did 23 interviews, either in person or over Zoom, with staff and residents and all kinds of people, and held an open house where 35 people attended. Her background research also included reviewing about 40 different documents and articles and 11 city reports to help shape this master plan. So through all of that research, she identified a few challenges. The first being the perception of public art. There, you've probably heard, a lot of people will say, "Public art is a waste of taxpayer money." Luckily, the survey results showed that only about seven people explicitly, or, sorry, not seven people, 7% explicitly called that out. However, our community satisfaction survey results that we heard about earlier today demonstrate how there is a pretty high support for public art in Merriam. About 70% of respondents agreed with supporting a public art program, and we generally have very satisfied residents with all of our services. So it seems as if taxpayer money is well-supported here. Another challenge is the quality of engagement. There's a handful of our public, current public art pieces that have lower engagement or people aren't familiar with, mostly because we don't program specific activities around them. So that's something that we could improve upon, as well as our community's identity. Merriam is, as you well know, is often known as a car town and for housing IKEA, rather than our culture and our arts. So those are some challenges, and some of the strengths are our people. We have a lot of very welcoming people here, who are very friendly and inclusive. Our location is easy to get around the metro. We have a lot of really great arts organizations in the community that we can partner with, such as the Kansas City Arts Institute, the Nelson, lots of other arts councils in other area, area organizations, arts organizations. So what are the goals of the Public Art and Placemaking Master Plan? To foster place-based pride, rejuvenate and enliven public spaces, and create a more engaged community through public art. So to achieve these goals, the plan recommends that all future projects be linked to specific placemaking outcomes, and defines public art in a more expansive way. So what is public art? It is inclusive of literature, performance, events, and experimental works in addition to visual arts. Public art is self-expression in any media that is created for the benefit of the general public. So those outcomes that we want all future projects to help meet, go, fall into three different categories with some subcategories, but the, the three categories are creative placemaking, which are outcomes related to geographical locations and their qualities, community development, or outcomes related to people and their needs, and economic development, which are outcomes related to financial growth and prosperity. Some of the short-term priorities to help us achieve this, for implementing this plan, are to establish a few things by ordinance. That includes a public art impact fee, which would also help establish the Public Art Committee and a public art fund to formalize the public art program. And then several locations for considering adding more public art in municipal infrastructure, our parks and facilities, and a few other properties throughout Merriam. And then also consider creating or expanding existing grant programs to better support private development, or private property owners in having their own public art, that further expands the city's identity in support of arts and culture. Some long-term priorities include integrating arts into the earlier stages of major projects. This would help prevent art as being seen as an adornment or to a new structure or landscape, and helps recognize that artists and arts facilitators are important participants in the planning processes. Additionally, building partnerships to promote our public art opportunities and improve the visibility of our public art, and again, creating some avenues for private property owners to include public art in their, on their property. Some community preferences that were uncovered through the community survey include where we should put public art. Some of the favorite locations included city streets, medians, roundabout sidewalks, Annie Oak Park, the historic downtown corridor, and unexpected places, my favorite answer. The themes that were most popular include nature and environment, functional, and aesthetics. And I will just throw in there that the absolute lowest theme was politics at only 2%. So, don't expect any political art in the future. And there's, these are just two quotes from the surveys that I thought you guys would appreciate. "I've always been impressed with the forward and inclusive ideas that the leadership and community put into Merriam, and I love living in a city that cares about our residents' opinions and art." So find, the plan also includes some administrative guidelines. Those guidelines outline the roles and responsibilities for the public art coordinator, the Public Art Committee, a mayor, and city council, and city departments. The plan does recommend that, to best implement a public art program, that the public art coordinator should be a full-time position, rather than dispersed among various staff. And then for the procurement process, the, the plan recommends that city departments get a chance to review a proposal at a very early stage in the process to, you know, bring up any feasibility issues that we might have, as well as before a final project is approved by council and then, you know, becomes implemented. So that would be helpful. She also identified some funding options, however, also notes that Kansas is one of the least culturally funded states in the country, and so any grants related to arts funding are extremely competitive, and most grants that are available are related to community engagement or creative placemaking projects, not just art for art's sake. So part of why this plan is called a Public Art and Placemaking Master Plan. Let's see, as far as implementation goes, she outlines a four-step, the plan outlines a four-step process for committee engagement, maintaining an active and robust committee, keeping ourselves organized, engaging the community, and raising awareness for all of our public art, and continuing to evaluate what we're doing and seeing how we can improve. So finally, at the back of the plan, there are a few resources that include a placemaking strategies rubric that includes tactics and KPIs, a procurement checklist to keep us on track, that has some action steps and responsibilities, an RFP evaluation rubric for when we get to that point where we get to, you know, evaluate proposals, and then listings for different places that we can promote solicitations for public art. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, but also give a special thanks to our Public Art Committee, especially Sean McConnell and Christopher Leach, who are here to support this. Would you care to say anything?
I'd say something real quick, mostly just thank you, council. Sean McConnell, chairman of the Public Art Committee. The group that we work with, I don't think they were particularly ready for doing a master plan in terms of a bunch of artists trying to get together to create something like this, but I think it really helped them understand what their community, the rest of their community expects and wants from them. So there's accountability to what we're doing, and we understand what they really perceive. I think that's really important for you to understand that. And the group has been extremely professional and considerate of each other and diligent in this process. So. So kudos to all of them, and you should be very thankful. Take a good look at everything in that report, because there's some really cool information in there that we gathered from residents and otherwise. So that's the only thing I wanted to add.
Thank you for chairing that committee for us, Mr. McConnell. Yeah, we have, yeah, Mr. Leach, you you're welcome to speak right now, or I don't know if there's any questions, but go ahead and speak, since you're already up.
She wants me to take, she wants me to take up some space. I do have a few little notes, and since I followed the rules and signed the sheet.
Can you tell us your name and address for the record? I've got to ask Mr. Connell that, too.
My name is Christopher Leach, and I reside at 8600 West 60th Street on the east flank of Mount IKEA.
Thank you.
I have a few notes, and you'll indulge me, because otherwise I'm scatterbrained. This is a plan that understands us Merriamites as whole people. Our little city does a lot to meet our real physical needs in so many ways. Roads and parks are excellent community center, and so many more efforts are made to make our lives great here. We're also people of feeling, of spirit, and art is the human language of our poetical selves. Our city leadership recognizes that and has given us, as residents, opportunity to explore this aspect of our public lives together. We all, we're really grateful. The committee was eager and energetic, as was our visionary staff liaison, Lauren. We did not all agree all the time, but we helped each other share our ideas and work with our consultant to help forge a path forward to bring more art into public places in Merriam. We chose a consultant, Ms. Dixon, from a small independent firm, so independent, she's its only staff person, who could help us and our residents tailor a plan that fits us. It's not a cookie cutter approach that would make us look like every other community around us. As an artist, an art historian, and a museum consultant, I fully support this plan, and I urge you to accept it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Okay, go ahead, Ms. McConnell.
8323 West 61st Street, Merriam, Kansas.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Are there any questions for? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, I don't really have a question, but I have a comment. Like, I know I kind of just joined the the Art Committee as the city council liaison, but, you know, I think I would encourage all of you as councilmembers to reach out to Councilmember Silvers or I if you had any questions or concerns about how this was presented, or if you have any questions about the plan, because I've read it a lot. And I met Julia, which is her energy. You know, she had, I think, a unique perspective of looking at our community. So I think this was, being on the committee before, I feel like this gives a lot of structure and a lot of, just kind of a guidepost for us to relate to, to keep us moving forward with our public art initiatives.
Thank you, Ms. Shaveta. Thank you, Ms. Silver, for serving on that committee. Are there any questions for Ms. Krushova? Okay, go ahead, maybe.
I thought he was going to say something.
Go ahead.
No. I, so I am really pleased to hear those of you who actually were at some of the committee discussions, because when I read through it, I went, "This is different than what we had before," because it didn't seem like it to me. I did think that the appendix at the end that had the placemaking chart and those things to consider was probably really useful. A lot of it was so much just gathering history and all of that. I wasn't sure that was really part of the task that I thought she would do. So I am pleased to hear that you are liking that. I'm hoping that nobody's going to come tomorrow and ask our next meeting and ask us for a public art coordinator, because I thought that was a little beyond what we might be ready for.
Go ahead, Ms. Caudal.
That feeds into my question, because I'm a supporter of the public art thing, and I want to say this in a very loving way, but I heard the term dedicated staff and full-time coordinator, and wondering how that's going to fit into our budget discussions as years go by. Because at some point, it will.
I'll answer that and just simply say that the budget we're presenting tonight for 2025 does not have a art coordinator in it.
Well, it has artwork in the CIP portion.
It does, yes, sir.
Which is, I guess, for the specific pieces of art, not for the administration.
We have an assistant, the city administrator, that currently is.
Part of my responsibilities are fulfilling that role right now.
Go ahead, Ms. Shaveta.
I mean, I guess to comment on that, I agree with you, but I would also say we don't follow a master plan on everything we do either. So I think it's, you know, again, it's not in the budget for next year, but I think we also have a lot to talk about with the, I want to call it 1% for art, I know that's not, we're not calling it in here, but, you know, an art ordinance. So I think there's lots of ways that we can, you know, build up to that if that's necessary as we keep moving forward the public art program.
Yeah, and I agree.
Personally.
My conver, my self-conversation as I was reading the plan was, "This is a plan." You've read a lot of plans, and they they have a lot of vision in them, not necessarily something that's going to be implemented tomorrow, so.
Yep.
Any other questions at this point? I'm seeing no questions, so I would entertain a motion this time. Did one of the Art Committee members, would you like to make that? Go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the public art and placemaking master plan as recommended by the Public Art Committee.
Ms. Shaveta, would you like to second that?
Yes, I would, thank you, Mayor. I'll second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion to second.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudal.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neen.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. It looks like we have Director Oliver coming up for the next item, which is probably approval of an intent to exceed the revenue needle rate.
Tonight, I'm here just to introduce you to what's in the 2025 recommended budget. So as we get through this, we'll talk about budgeted funds. We don't have any additional budgeted funds this year. We just have general fund. We have some special revenue funds, bond and interest, and capital projects. Some of the highlights here, we have a 3% salary increase and a 2% reserve for merit adjustments, a new position, however, this has nothing to do with arts, to potentially coordinate the single hauler program. And just a couple of slides, we have a slide dedicated to that, and Mr. Engel will talk about that. It assumes a 12% health insurance increase. We certainly hope it won't be that much, but we won't know until November. All current services are funding. In addition, some highlights of additional things, there's $50,000 in there for the city's 75th anniversary celebration. There's public works, police and fire equipment that we'll talk about. And then all of the current grants are also in there and funded. General fund expenditures, specifically, there is proposed 21.6 million in general fund operating expenditures, 5.6 million in transfers to other funds. Those largely fund the capital improvement projects and the equipment reserve fund. Total 27.2 million in expenditures. That's a 4.9% over the current year. When you look at what is the general fund go-to, you can see that police and court make up 5.6%, which is not five, 5.6 million, which is 21% of the budget. Capital Improvement Fund and Equipment is 20%. Public Works, 18%. Fire is 11%. So your public safety is a healthy percentage of of what all that covers. I'll let Ms. Engel talk about the office coordinator position.
Sure, I'll be, I'll be brief and happy to answer any questions about it. So we have been having conversations about single hauler. As we saw earlier, there is a high percentage of folks in our community that are supportive of exploring the single hauler. It is a council goal to explore a single hauler. We had a work session, and I shared with council in the past, that we don't have currently capacity to pick up what we project to be the staff need to do single hauler. However, that is not a full FTE. We're not exactly sure how much it is. It's going to be somewhere around a third, perhaps to a half if we do it. What we are proposing is that we have some additional capacity that we could use in HR. So for those of you that may not be aware, Kason, who sits at the front counter, she is actually a half FTE that's devoted to HR. So she does half office coordinator and half HR. There is some additional HR capacity that I've kind of been holding off. As you know, I don't like to increase the FTE count. I take pride in the fact that I haven't, other than our community center, added any FTEs since I've been here, so I take it pretty seriously. So we've kind of held off that additional half HR FTE. There's a lot of letters there. But with the need for some additional capacity, if we were to do single hauler, we felt like this would be a good way that we could move Kason, fully embed her in HR as a full FTE for H, for HR, have the office coordinator position, which is half of her current FTE, add half for the single hauler, and a few additional things that we would add on there, and we would just have a new position. We try not to, what I call Frankenstein positions, to where it makes them difficult to hire them at a later date. We think that this would flow together as an office coordinator, maybe even a little bit more than the current HR slash office coordinator position. So this would be a position that we would not hire, we would not make this move until we knew what we were doing with single hauler. So we would start the process, we would say, "Okay, we feel like it's heading this direction. We feel like the council is supportive. We feel like the residents are supportive. Let's ramp up and let's get, let's get somebody on board that can help us with this, the implementation of this process." So we have stuck it in the budget based on the assumption that we're going to do single hauler. If we don't, we won't. I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions, Mr. Engel?
And that is, I believe, that's the only FTE that we're adding to the budget. If if needed.
If needed, okay. Thank you.
So with that, these numbers include the addition of that full-time equivalent, and so you would have an 8.5% increase in salaries and overall salary and benefits increasing by 8.6% with those assumptions in it. Community grants, there was only one change, and this was to change the downtown historic grant into a historic exterior grant and to increase the funding. I'm going to let Ms. Engel talk about it.
Sure, this is another, you know, I love my grants. I think the council loves the grants. I think our residents and our businesses love the grants. We, we allocated $1 million several years ago to our hotels, where they could max out $250,000 each to rehab their, to rehab their facilities, but there's only four hotels in our community. We are fairly certain that there probably going to be at least one that doesn't use any of it, and so I would like to redirect some of that to another possible use in the commercial areas of our community. And what I have in mind for this particular one would be to use the $250,000 that's left over from the hotel grant. This would be probably older buildings. We would be looking at buildings that would be on the register. How would they, should they make a choice to invest to rehab those properties? For example, downtown, the Pittman Building, which is 150-year-old schoolhouse, it's currently a used car building. If they wanted to get, if they wanted to have a different presence in a, say, future downtown and wanted to rehab that building, that would be an opportunity that for the city to help them rehab that building. Shawnee has similar grants that help fund some of the rehabs in their downtown along Neiman and Johnson Drive. So if the Pittman Building were to follow some of these requirements that we put together, we would have funding to provide them with. That would be what it would be used for. We wouldn't use it for anything else, but we, staff would like to keep that money in some sort of a grant form for our commercial businesses. We probably, if that doesn't work, we will probably continually widen it up and make it broader, so we could have more commercial businesses included. But we just don't want to have, staff does not believe that we should just have a wide-open, "Hey, if you need some money for new siding, we're going to give you new siding." So that's, so it would be citywide, it would not necessarily be downtown. Originally, we had it just downtown, so it would be historic buildings that exist anywhere in our community. We, we're imagining probably 100-year-old buildings or more, and then we'll just broaden it from there. Happy, we still have to put, like we do with most grants, we get approval from council, we come back with a little bit more tightened-down requirements. Still going to work on some of those, but that's, that's the gist of what this grant would go for. Again, it's, it's money that's already been allocated for the grant, so it's not really new funding also.
Okay. The proposed city-funded grants, again, there has been no change to these. You have the same grants, and they would total 810,000. That includes with the increase to the exterior, the historic grant. Are there any questions? This is kind of the high view of the general fund. And again, in your packet, hopefully you saw, was the draft budget that really provides you more details. Okay. If we go to our other funds, we have our bond and interest fund. One highlight of this one is proposed in '25. We do not have a property tax levy at all in there. We believe that sales tax will be able to take care of the debt service on it, so that is where a portion of the property tax reduction that's proposed in here would would come from. Transient gas tax fund, total expenditures of $621,000. Equipment Reserve Fund, capital expenditures of 1.6 million. Those include primarily a couple of dump trucks with dump beds at 540,000, and body worn and in-car cameras for the police department. Then we have some IT replacements and replacing the city door lock system. So for a total of 1.6 million. Capital Improvement Fund, this would fund what we talked about in May with the CIP Fund, with the CIP projects, and total expenditures of 8.1 million. And then the I-35 district TIF fund, this year, we have a, two payments to Drake Development, and so expenditures are 7.8 million. Next year, we'll only have the one. It kind of goes back to a more normalized amount of 4.3 million. So if we look at all the funds overall, we have total expenditures of 39.4 million, transfers to other funds of 6 million, so total transfers and expenditures of 45.5 million in the budget for next year. So if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them at this time. Okay.
Any questions for Director Oliver?
And again, as you go home and you look at your books over, over, or the, what's included with your packet, if you have questions, you can always bring them back in, and we can talk about those questions. Property tax revenues. One of our goals is maintaining adequate reserves and funding city services to reduce the city's mill levy whenever possible. This budget includes a one-mill reduction from the 2023 budget. And as you may recall, originally, it was proposed that in the 2024 budget, we would that in the 2024 budget, we would see a quarter of a mill reduction due to some errors that got reduced down to just under 23 mills. We're proposing 26.65, which is one mill. I showed you this last time, but I do think it shows. I mean, we were so consistent and kept that there for so long, and we had the dip down, but we're going to be below that even, even now, which is great. This is our final assessed valuation for the budget. 51% is in commercial, residential is 40, makes up 46% of that. And then looking at the revenue neutral rate, that's the rate that you would need to generate the very same amount of property tax this year as last year. I know we've talked about this, you know, quite a few times. It doesn't allow anything for inflation or new construction. If we looked at last year, because we had a reduced mill levy, we generated 6.1 million. The county, when they calculated our revenue neutral rate, they tried to keep to that same amount. And so we would actually need to, if we went with the revenue neutral rate, we would need to address, to reduce the mill levy another one and three-quarter mil in order to stay below the revenue neutral rate. However, we're proposing that we go with the 26.665. If we do, that generates 7.7 million and gets us back up where we were before. And the difference, however, in revenue collected is 1.6 million. If we look at other Johnson counties, right now, the indication is that all of these cities are intending to exceed the revenue neutral rate. So if there's any questions about that, we can talk, kind of...
Questions for Director Oliver?
We can kind of talk next steps. Tonight, we have on the agenda the approval of exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Before July 20th, staff has to notify the county of whether or not we intend to. This does not set the mill levy rate, nor does it lock you in to having to exceed the revenue neutral rate. It's just unless we notify them that we may exceed it, we can't. And so this is really, yeah, we think we're probably going to propose a budget above that 21-point, whatever it was, the almost two-mill reduction. So assuming that you do pass that and say, yes, we're going to, then in August 26th, we'll have a public hearing to consider what, to consider whether or not we're going to exceed it and also to adopt the budget. Between now and August 26th, everything can kind of roll around, or roll along in two different ways. If there are no further questions, we don't have to talk about the budget again before then. However, we are very open to, if there's questions, concerns, or other discussion that needs to be had after this point, to coming back and, and discussing whatever those things may be at the second meeting in July. But at least for tonight, we, we need to have the decision on, is it okay for us to tell the county we're going to probably exceed the revenue neutral rate?
And so just for clarification, that, that, that means we're going to exceed 21.332. Whether that's 21.6 or that's the current 22, it, it just means that we are going to exceed 21.168.
Right. And so with that, there's a motion on your agenda to pass.
I would entertain a motion that we exceed that myself.
I, I would too. And I'd be happy to do that, yes. I move that the council authorize staff to notify Johnson County of the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate and to hold a public hearing on August 26th on the matter.
Okay, we have a motion to have a say, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion to say.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudill.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Director Oliver. I have one more question about the capital improvement and the generators that we put on hold this year because of the, the TIF financing and the budget. Do those show up in the capital improvement plan for 2025, or are we pushing them out further?
No, right now, they are, we did not reduce the budget. We just said we were going to hold off, and then like in the July-August timeframe, we would come back to council and decide whether or not we were going to progress with those. And so if in fact, whenever we come back, if in July, if you were to say, no, we want you to hold off for another year, we would need to push them out.
I could, I could give a further update on that, and Celia probably could also. Current planning, I think he's the chair, Bill, for, current planning commission chair. He actually was a facilities, just a recently retired facilities superintendent for the University of Kansas Systems. He knows HVAC, so we've actually started to have some conversations, and we've actually engaged him. So Caleb Hunt, our facility superintendent, has, has met with him to, because he is, he's an expert on it, knows more about it than we do. And they've had some good conversations about that. So I think we're going to probably be coming back to council, I would imagine, sometime soon to go out to bid. But yeah, we, we've started to have those conversations about what's the best equipment out there and how should we size it, and how many hours should it run, and a lot of things that are above my understanding of generators. But that's why we brought in Bill, because he's an expert in it. And he's been gracious enough to, to work with our staff, so it just has an update.
No, thanks, considering we had to close the community center for a few days.
Okay. Community development update, looks like it's next, Director Dyer.
Your mayor, councilmembers, Brian Dyer, community development director. Seemant update on a few items. First of all, unfortunately, all the spring storms we had that brought the hail have turned into a high rate of building permits for us. On roofing side, we may actually break records on the number of permits we issue this month. So if you're in City Hall and you see Nancy or Jasmine, please extend your condolences. They have been extremely busy. It has been very, very busy back there. So if you, when you see a report on building permits, notice the high, high number of just permits issued. It's because of roofing permits because of the hailstorms. Also on the building side of things, obviously, two big projects, Marion Grand Station and Aristocrat Motors. If you haven't been by Aristocrat Motors lately, you can take a look there. They've made a lot of progress as well. So both those projects are going along well. I haven't had any problems, and we continue to move along with those. And then on the grant side of things, we tend, continue to get residential exterior grant applications in. We're getting closer and closer to starting to get to the point where we might have to consider not allocating fund for some projects, but so if folks have projects for that, please do get those in. And the resident, excuse me, and the sustainability grant program still has ample funds available. So if anybody would like to upgrade their HVAC system to beat the summer heat, we can certainly help them with that. And then the other thing, our driveway grant program, you all last month approved a contract to extend to contractor. We have done that, we have engaged contractor, and they intend to be starting work first of July. So we'll be out there, David will easily be out there working between the contractor and the, the property owners to get that done. So with that, happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions for Director Dyer? I see no questions. Thank you, sir. Okay, well, the Public Art Committee minutes were in our packet, so unless you have questions for that, you could actually see one of our councilmembers, I guess, about that. But, Mr. Engel, do we have anything else?
Just two quick updates. One, just to echo comments made earlier. Congratulate the council and thank staff for the fantastic results we have in, in our satisfaction survey. These are fantastic. These are, this is what I use, and as a result, all of your staff uses as really our north star. This is really what tells us, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing? This is what guides our work, this is what validates the work that we do. We only do it every three years. We don't ask people questions every time we go through tough, tough conversations. This is really the best way to do it, and it really echoes that, that we're doing the right thing. So again, congratulations to you and thanks to our staff and our residents for filling it out and their, their support in all that we do. You're going to see a lot more about this, you're going to see videos. We're going to, we're going to celebrate the heck out of this, and we're going to let our residents know we don't toot our horns a whole heck of a lot, but I think we've got some celebrations and some successes to share with and amongst our staff, our elected officials and our residents. So I look forward to that. And then the last thing is, I am going to, I think, miss my second council meeting in 13 years. Next time, I'm going to be in Alaska from July 5th until July 19th. So I'll be gone for two weeks. I will, I might be available by email, maybe, I don't know, probably not. But I will not be at the next meeting. Caitlin will be holding the fort down for me. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have in the interim between now and then. I'll take a picture. I won't bring, I won't bring in very varieties back like Count, Mayor did, but, yeah. Do you want Wawa or salmon?
You can ship them, you know.
I didn't show all my pictures, come on.
How about some moose jerky? So what about the retirement of the, that we got invited to go to the retirement at the World War I Memorial of the Corps of Engineers Commander?
So that's, that's a change in command ceremony tied with the retirement. So Colonel Rayfield is the current United States Army Corps of Engineers Colonel. So he is the head Fred, as Mr. Dyer likes to say, of, of the Corps. We don't work with him a whole lot, we work with his staff, but he is retiring, and as a result, there will be a change of command that we were invited to at the World War I Memorial. We're more than welcome to attend, or...
My question really is, is, is it something that we, we should have a presence at?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt, but again, we don't really work with them. I think it was more of a courtesy we were invited, is my personal opinion. But I think, you know, we, it wouldn't hurt to have someone there. It, Mayor could add it to his mayor report in the meeting afterwards.
I can just go, Jake can just take me to work, and I'll work down there for the day.
Take a council member to work day, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, we can certainly, we can certainly have a conversation about seeing if...
Okay.
Get at least a staff person there or coordinate with a council member.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Engel? Here's your wave, I'm the mayor. None of mine. Gee, back. Okay, well, if there is nothing else before us, I would entertain a motion where adjourned. I, I thought Mr. Leahy was getting ready to make a motion.
I move where adjourned.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second, I might want to leave, I think.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.